I would like to call this meeting to order. Will you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Reed.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lit.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here, ma'am.
Councilmember Marciano.
Here, ma'am.
Councilmember Tinsley.
Here.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications this evening?
Yes, ma'am. There are three, and I handed you the sheet.
All right.
To read into the record, please. Thank you.
Our additions under consent, we have a proclamation, which is new item H, and new item I, and under items for council action discussion, we have a new item B. Am I okay to go on to announcements and presentations then? All right. Thank you.
You have to have a motion and a vote, please, to adopt the ADM.
All right. Let's go ahead and adopt these additions. So may I get a motion in a second, please?
What is... Can you say what they are?
Yeah, absolutely. So, under our consent, we have a proclamation. And that has been provided to you here.
I don't see a proclamation.
So, the proclamation is not... It's actually with a tremendous amount of sadness. We're presenting an addition this evening. On Thursday, January 26th, a 17-year volunteer in our police department lost his life in a tragic car accident. Dr. Howard Wexler, known to everyone as Doc, was a volunteer in the police department from 2006 to 2023. And we have added this proclamation in the hopes of honoring him and adopting it. And we actually attended the service today. It was a very moving service. He's been a tremendous part of our community for a long time. It was so sad to hear of a passing of someone who has contributed so much in life just as a person, let alone what he's done for the city. So we were all moved and honored to be there. And so that is with sadness, we're adding this proclamation. Excuse me. Then, new item I is Resolution 16. We have a Senate bill, which is Senate Bill 350, and House Bill 235, which supports mobility and clarifying the previous language made by the state of Florida regarding mobility. And we're moving forward with that. And then, under items for council action discussion and items of interest, we have Resolution 14, which is our new item B, 14-2023, which is establishing the April meeting date and time due to conflicts on the calendar. So for that, I am looking for a motion at a second.
Thank you. I will make a motion to pass the consent agenda.
It's to adopt the agenda as amended.
To adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks, Max. Thank you, Patty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much. Next, we have announcements and presentations. First, we have the recognition of Sergeant Carl Cooper. Can we please have Police Chief Clint Shannon, thank you, come to the podium?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. For the record, Clint Shannon, your Chief of Police. If I can have Sergeant Carl Cooper join me, please, up at the podium. I got to tell you, we kind of duped him into being here tonight. He thought that the reason that he's here is we're going to recognize the work of all our officers in the deployment to Sanibel. But the truth of the matter is, we've singled him out because of his outstanding leadership. And we wanted to make sure that you are aware of his... of the job that he did over on the West Coast and how proud of him we are. To give you a little bit of background, and I know you have a lot of information about what went on over in Sanibel, but on September 28, 2022, Hurricane Ian, a strong Category 4 storm, devastated the west coast of Florida, causing catastrophic damage to Sanibel Island. The entire island's power grid was destroyed, and the causeway leading to the island was severely damaged. Sanibel Police immediately requested assistance from other police jurisdictions to assist them with policing duties during the post-storm recovery. Palm Beach Gardens Police, at the request from the Florida Police Chiefs Association, teamed up with other jurisdictions, sending a multitude of officers for deployment for a one-month period. Sergeant Cooper immediately volunteered assistance in the operation and took over a key role as the island's Incident Commander on the fourth week of deployment. Sergeant Cooper advised that prior to our arrival, Sanibel Police reported over 60 residential burglaries that had occurred and that they had needed a strong police presence to combat the surging crime wave. Sergeant Cooper had officers working 16-hour shifts exclusively at night, patrolling, answering calls for service, and providing security checkpoints to identify anyone coming onto the island. The officers also used night vision surveillance equipment, unmanned aerial systems, our drones, and advanced patrol tactics to deter and apprehend criminals. This strategy greatly lowered criminal activity while we were deployed on the island. As the operation approached the Thanksgiving holiday, no other departments volunteered to assist Sergeant Cooper and a dozen dedicated Palm Beach Gardens officers that volunteered to work that week, performing the normal law enforcement operations of 50 or 60 officers. Sergeant Cooper is being recognized tonight for his strong leadership, dedication to serve, and for effectively coordinating public safety on the island during extremely challenging times. Like we had mentioned, one of the proudish was when I went over to Sanibel early Thanksgiving morning to, not only to show Sergeant Cooper appreciation, but to all of our officers. The accolades that we received from Sanibel made me extremely proud. But Sergeant Cooper quietly showed his leadership skills over there and just did an amazing job. He was doing the work of ranks that were much higher above him the previous three weeks. So, tonight, and Sarge, that's why a lot of your teammates are here too, but we want to recognize you for the amazing job you did. And, of course, we have our award ceremony to recognize Sergeant Cooper, but the job he did, I thought, was worthy of special recognition, certainly before the mayor and council tonight. Sarge?
Thank you.
Congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, Sarge?
I need a minute.
He's going to kill me for this later, so...
Okay. We can actually see his face. I don't think I've seen more humility. Thank you. Take a moment.
We love you, Carl.
Let's just say you made us very proud.
Thank you.
I'll tell you what. We'd like to take a picture with you.
Let's do that first.
With all of your uniformed personnel, so we'll do that for a breather. Thank you.
Good job. Thanks for giving me the minute. I'd just like to say that it's an honor, especially in such... in front of such an esteemed audience, to receive this award. And although I'm getting it individually, I must say that the leadership we have at our police department, from the chief down to the captain, and also the songs I work alongside, they played a part in this because I basically just took everything over the years that I hear and see, and it caused me to do as well as I did. Also, the officers that were deployed alongside me, couldn't have done it without them. They did a tremendous job. And also, some of the officers that I work with from other departments. So although I'm getting this award individually, it's really a plethora of factors that went into this, so thank you.
Madam Mayor, do you mind if I ask a quick question?
Yeah, please.
Sergeant, before you go, Sergeant, before you go, can you just give us a quick snippet of what it was like those days after the storm, when you guys and how many other departments were there? Because none of us... I mean, we all felt it, but we weren't there. We didn't see it. We all had friends and people that we knew that were impacted. But can you just share maybe a story or two?
Sergeant, can I please ask you to return to the microphone? Thank you.
Well, I'll just start with the nuances. Sanibel was hot, for the most part. You were getting bit by sand flies. The officers, they slept in air-conditioned trailers on bunks, top and bottom. We had a kitchen where they were fed 24 hours a day. And basically, at night, the guys, they patrol different zones, try to deter burglary from occurring on the island. You had issues with tow trucks entering the island, leaving with vehicles that they're not supposed to leave with. So checkpoints were set up, and the officers were charged with checking the manifest that the tow truck drivers have to make sure that they're leaving with the vehicles that they were sent to pick up. Also, they did house checks. As you know, most of the island lost power, but the power was slowly coming on from week to week. And, you know, they treated, you know, down wires as if they were alive. They assisted citizens going to and off the island. And they also did beach patrol to make sure that... Because we had violators who were coming in by jet skis and boats to commit burglaries also. So it wasn't just coming across the bridge on... by vehicle, but they were doing it by boats and jet skis also.
We're so thankful for your service and for allowing us to give you this appreciation for your service as well. And we know you had a lot of... You didn't mention that you didn't sleep a lot either, right?
I mean, it comes with the territory.
We really appreciate everything you did there and everything that you do here. And so we're going to make you stay there for one more second. I'm going to jump ahead. Normally, we do comment cards after presentations, but we do have a comment card from Brett Leone, who is on our council. If he could... I mean, on our staff, if he could please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, sir?
Counsel, for the record, Brett Leone, 132 Barbados, up in Jupiter. Nice to come before you all, not as staff tonight, but as a citizen of the state of Florida and also as an employee of the city. And I know I've mentioned this to Chief. My wife's family's lived on Sanibel for 50 years. And we took a boat over the weekend after, or the first weekend they allowed us to come over. And that was... I don't think you touched on it, but going over there, right away, I've never been deployed. I've never been to, you know, third-world countries. But what you see in movies and videos, that's exactly what Sanibel looked like. And it was pretty devastating to know how beautiful of an island it is to what it was turned to due to the wrath of Mother Nature. One of the shining moments is, we went over the weekend, the causeway first opened. And one of the first police cars I saw sitting at the base of that causeway was a Palm Beach Gardens police officer. Didn't have the chance to stop because there were a million cars behind me, but in my heart, you know, I knew a piece of home was there and that you all were doing your job to keep the island safe. And I know you guys were working tonight, but talking with Chief Shannon and knowing everything you guys did to keep the island safe, you know, wanted to get up here as a public comment and say thank you. Thank you to Chief, thank you to you, sir, and the rest of the officers and the leadership from the council and everything like that. So, again, thank you all for everything you did for the island. I'm not a resident over there, but I think if they'd allow me to, I speak on behalf of them and say thank you.
Thank you, Brett. So, we could do this all night, but you're allowed to...
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We are really, really deeply appreciative. Thank you. Really, really... These are... Yeah. Terrible situation made better. Next is the 2022 Marriage Veteran Golf Classic Check presentation. We have Casey Mitchell, our Director of Golf. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. For the record, Casey Mitchell, General Manager at the Sand Hill Crane Golf Club. I have a slideshow that's going to play while I give my presentation. I'd like to start with a little history of the tournament for those who are not aware. 2022 marked the 16th year that the city hosted the event at Sand Hill Crane Golf Club. The event was hosted on November 5th with a full field of 144 players. Over 85 city employees and volunteers assisted throughout the day, with all of the funds raised during the event being donated to the West Palm Beach VA Resource Center to help our homeless and indigent veterans in need. Joining us tonight, staff from the VA. We have Julia Spence, the Assistant Director, Mason Yule, the Homeless Program Social Work Section Chief, and Dr. Ronald K. Williams, Chief of Staff, who's here to give an update on how those funds will be used.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, councils, and esteemed guests and sponsors, thank you very much for having me here. I'm Dr. Ron Williams, the Chief of Staff at the VA West Palm Beach. Sorry I wasn't there this year for the first time. I was called up on active duty. So I heard it was a fun time. So I heard everyone had a great time there. It's amazing how year after year, we continue to gather for such a special purpose. And every time, I can't help but step back to take it all in. Who knew that the sport of golf would have such an impact? Thank you for all who made this possible. Your drive on and off the course allowed for life-changing beginnings for many of our veterans. As Mason previously mentioned during this year's tournament, your partnership is essential in shaping a bright future for most of our most vulnerable veteran populations. These funds will go towards rent, utility expenses, transportation assistance, hygiene, and home supplies, and so much more. Before I hand it over to Mason to speak about this a little bit more, again, I want to stress and capture amongst you all the value this holds in the hearts of our team. To have this annual donation to support better days ahead for our veterans is more than just dollar bills. It's a community support like no other. Having a community partner is honorable, and we will... Well, one that I am forever grateful for, what I can see firsthand as a progressive opportunities, is not only creates, but also sustains our veterans and stability for our veterans, and thank you. Without ado, I would like to offer to Madison, over the personal appreciation, to, on behalf of the Homeless Program, year after year, he continues, Mason, to gather for such a special purpose. And every time, I can't help but take a step back again. This impact is a great thing for our veterans and will have a lot of important sustained things for their rent, utility expenses, transportation, hygiene, and home supplies that we mentioned more. So I'm going to hand it over to Mason to speak a little bit more and stress and capture amongst you the value this holds hard to our scenes and how this is more than just dollar bills, and this community support is like no other. So without further ado, let me hand it over to Mason and personal appreciation on behalf of the Homeless Program, as he is our Director of the Program. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. You know, I just wanted to put in context how these funds are used every day. You know, I'm sure everyone in this room is aware of our housing crisis, of how expensive it is to live in Palm Beach County. And it's not getting any better. So the money that is donated, we use every day to help support veterans, get into a housing, supply them with that first month, that security deposit, fixing their car, paying their utilities. I mean, these are individuals that may have hit hard times. They tend to be the most marginalized folks in our community. And without these funds, we would not be able to support them like we do. We were talking earlier, you know, I think it's... I don't think the public is aware of how much the VA actually does for our veterans. But with that said, we wouldn't be able to do what we do without your support. So this money is incredibly important, and I thank you very much for it.
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank council and city administration for their support of this event and the volunteers and staff who assisted in making this tournament possible. There are far too many names to list. But planning for this event starts in March every year, and it simply would not be possible without those volunteers. Palm Beach Gardens High School Choir came to sing the National Anthem. Palm Beach Gardens Fire Rescue Department and the Honor Guard were there as well. Our local businesses and organizations who made in-kind contributions to the event, our players and our sponsors. There's a couple of sponsors I'd like to take a minute to recognize. First, the Palm Beach Gardens Police and Fire Rescue Foundation, who supported the event as our presenting sponsor this year for a $5,000 donation. And our albatross sponsors, TBC Corporation, JW Cheatham, and Alan Norton in Blue. We have two additional albatross sponsors joining us tonight. Our City Attorney and Navy Veteran from Loman Law Group, Mr. Max Loman, and from Florida Power and Light, Mr. Donald Kesseluski. And I'd like to ask both of them to join council for the check presentation, please. And I'm very proud to announce this year that we were able to raise $70,704.21 for the Resource Center.
Thank you for all you do. Next, we have the 2022 Sand Hill Crane Golf Club Charity Initiative Update. Casey, you're still there? Perfect. Director of Golf will be presenting this as well. Thank you.
Okay. Also, in the spirit of giving, I'm just going to give you an update on fiscal year 2022. A history of the initiative. We started it in February of 2019 as a way to give back to our charities and local organizations and our 501(c)(3). So participants do a voluntary $5 donation when they check in and compete on course against other participants on one of our par threes, with all of the funds going to our nonprofits. These are some of the charities and organizations that we were able to assist in fiscal year 2022. However, over the course of that year, we actually ended up with 76 charities that we were able to assist. The total donation over the 12 months was $51,300. So this was the largest year that we've... The largest amount that we have raised in the three years that this has been going, which included a $10,000 donation to Operation Sister City to help those affected in the city of Wachula from Hurricane Ian. So since we started the initiative in February of 2019... Sorry. Didn't know that was going to be that loud. We have donated just under $82,000 to our local organizations. So thank you all again for your support of this. A special thank you to the Finance Department. Our reconciliations are really long, so thank you, guys.
Thank you. Again, just absolutely impressive that the outreach that comes out of this community is extraordinary. We're all really honored to be part of it, especially the money that went to Operation Sister City. We were just talking about that today, that the city manager from Wachula, when we were talking to him, said that what our city did to help them restored his faith in humanity after what they had been through. So every $5 counts, for sure. They felt it. So thank you. Okay. Next up, Palm Trans Service Changes. So I'm calling to the podium Clinton Forbes, the Executive Director, and Yash Nagal, who is the Inroom Director of Transit Planning, to come to the podium. Hi, guys.
All right. How we get this started? Good evening. My name is Clinton Forbes, as the mayor said, Executive Director of Palm Trans Public Transportation here in beautiful Palm Beach County, Florida. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember, thank you for allowing us to update you on a few of Palm Trans projects, as well as some of the upcoming projects that might impact your city in a good way. And, you know, before I begin, you know, I just want to... Mayor, I just want to thank you for your leadership and your vision. You are, of course, leading this council, as well as leading the Transportation Planning Agency of the county, which is, you know, the organization that just, you know, coordinates all the transportation in the county. So little small jobs you have, but thank you for your leadership. We really appreciate it. So just to begin, and I did hear some of the altruism that's going on in this great city, and just want to continue along that line with, you know, a campaign that we started in partnership with the League, the Palm Beach County League of Cities, and the Tri-Cities BBQ in beautiful Glades area, where we have a program that's called Stuff the Bus. And we stuff a bus full of toys to be distributed to underprivileged children in that region. And of course, you have your staff here, John and Lori, who also brought toys. And Mayor, I think you brought toys as well. So thank you for that. Just a little on Palm Trans. Palm Trans is the major mass transit provider in Palm Beach County. We provide, actually, that number's outdated. We provide over 7.2 million rides per year. And we have... My organization's about 650 people, 400 contractors, a little over 1,000 people, 500 vehicles, to include, you know, the fixed route, the 45th Bus, our Paratransit Service, which is door-to-door service for our elderly and disabled. And a new service, we call Micro Transit, is mobility on demand. And so we'll talk to you a little bit about that. on demand. And so, we'll talk to you a little bit about that service. But, you know, to the right is essentially all the service we provide in this very geographically large county, which is definitely a challenge. But we do provide mass transit to public. Some of the major projects that we have endeavored in include, you know, modernizing our fleet. As you can see, the photo on the left is a fixed route bus, very functional. It does the job for us. But the photo on the right is a redesigned bus with more smoother lines, and, you know, have great intelligence features inside the bus. Just to point out, one, you know, coming out of COVID, you know, one of the things we are, you know, majorly concerned with, considering we operate in one of the most confined spaces there is, a bus. And so, we wanted to ensure that we protect it and look out for the safe and well-being, the safety and well-being of our customers. So, we installed on all of our buses, including our smaller vans, a state-of-the-art air filtration system, which is essentially proactively cleanse and sanitize the entire bus. It's a system where it converts hydrogen peroxide to molecular, hydrogen, I'm sorry, it converts humidity to molecular hydrogen peroxide, and it actually cleans the stanchions, the seats, and the air in the bus. And we invested a lot in that, and so, our customers are very happy with the implementation of that system. We also implemented a state-of-the-art fare collection system. You know, my thing is, is for our customers who don't usually take transit, we wanted to make it really simple for them. So, this is a very sophisticated system that could take 30, 40 minutes to explain, but I essentially explain it like this. You should be able to ride our service with anything on your person, any type of fare media. So, when you approach the bus, you shouldn't have to think about it. So, if you have cash, if you have a credit card, if you have an iPhone, if you have a smartwatch, you should be able to pay your fare. And that's the system that we designed and implemented in November of 2021. Here's the Mobility on Demand service, we call Go Glades. This is our Uber and Lyft-type service that we introduced to Palm Beach County. And we're looking at the eastern part of the counties to see where we can implement this type of service. So, the Mobility on Demand essentially, you know, picks you up at your origination point and takes you to your destination, just like Uber and Lyft. It's hailed using the app, the Go Glades app that we created. You can actually see the vehicle approaching your origination point and your destination, similar to Uber. The better thing about this than Uber, Uber usually is a one-seat ride. This is a shared ride system, so the cost is a lot less expensive. So, we, customers share the ride, we organize the demand, but it's door-to-door. And, you know, when we were studying areas, I think we looked at about 13 areas within the east footprint of the county, and the two areas that rated the highest were Palm Beach Gardens and Royal Palm. And so, we have started some conversations with the mayor and her and the management about, you know, potentially implementing a Mobility on Demand service in this region. And so, we hope to continue those conversations. But we believe that this is, you know, we provide fixed route system, which is a large bus, and we want that system to be as linear as possible. That really makes an efficient transit system. If that big bus makes too many turns, it's inefficient. But this complements, this will complement our fixed route system, you know, and it will be scaled in a way where it's not very expensive, and it only cover, you know, certain, you know, areas within a given municipality. Our zero emission plan, just to hit on this, we are converting our propulsion to zero emission fleet, 25% zero emission by 2032, pretty aggressive plan. But we hope to procure our first buses this year and have delivery next year. And I'd like to introduce Yash Nagal. He's really the planner and the brains of Palm Trans. And so, I'm gonna allow him to talk to you about some recent service changes that we made here in the gardens that we believe are providing better service to the residents and visitors, as well as our bus shelter program that we'd like you to have information on. Yash?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and present to all of you. But more than that, thank you for keeping this city very beautiful and, you know, making the city very beautiful. I live not too far from here, and I'm a really happy resident. So, I just wanted to mention that before we jumped in. So, we did make a significant service change where we switched our Route 1 and Route 21 between Prosperity Farm Road and US-1. We saw that there was a lot more potential for picking up people in US-1 than there was on Prosperity Farm, so we put more buses through US-1, trying to provide them better services. There's more businesses out there. So, that was the rationale. We're still testing the service out. We'll keep you updated with the results, but, you know, this is our, this is our efforts in making the system more ridable. And just, I also wanna mention that one of our, one of our largest transit hubs are also in the city, is also in the city, Gardens Mall. It has about seven routes that goes through it. So, it is a very good transit ridership hub where a lot of people are utilizing the service, and we're very proud to provide that service there. So, I'll jump quickly into the bus shelter program. Really, we began this plan in 2019 with the TPA coming out with a shelter design guideline. You know, we put it out for solicitation because we wanted to implement the plan in 2020. Unfortunately, the plan was based off of an old model of advertising. We did not get any returns on it. We had to go back to the drawing board, make a few changes. And this year, actually in December, is what we've resolicited the contract, which is right now out there for, out there for to bid for. So, we're very happy to implement that plan. It's already in motion. Jumping into the type of shelters that you all have in the city, that's just a design that you have. We have a significant amount of infrastructure in the city, so there's a good amount of usage. I also wanted to quickly mention the photograph on your left, that's what we call a semi-seat. It is very helpful in providing seating when there's limited rideaway. So, we've been able to utilize this to, throughout just the county, to provide our passengers better service. On the left side, as you see, is the current shelter that we have, a little old, you know, not very good-looking. And on the right side is what you see is what we're moving towards. This is, of course, not the actual shelter that we've picked yet because the, because we haven't picked a vendor yet. But this is what we're trying to, that's a prototype of what we wanna do. Of course, this is gonna come with different branding options, because we understand that different cities want to have a different outlook to how they want the amenities inside their municipality to look like. So, we wanted to make sure that we made, we left some room for creativity there. Other than that, there are other amenities in this improvement plan, too. There's things like digital screens, you know, we talked about semi-seats before, solar lighting being another big one. It's really important for us because that's an aspect of safety. Safety is the first thing that we wanna do and consider. And also for our operators, to be able to see if there's passengers on the road at night or not. In our first place, first phase of our implementation plan, we do have two or three shelters that are in the municipality. They're on, on and around Military Trail, another one of our big ridership routes, Route 3 goes there. So, that was one of the locations. And there's a few ADA improvements that we wanna make, too, throughout the city. Just also reimagining the blade, the top blade that we have, we wanna have something that's more modern. You see a big, big QR code there, because that's where a lot of the, a lot of the population is moving. They're understanding what a QR code does. Our ultimate vision is to have something that people can point their phone towards, and it just gives you when the bus is arriving, you know, how much I do I have to wait, all of that information. So, we're just trying to eliminate the middle steps and trying to get people to their final destination as quick as possible. I went in reverse. This is just a rendering of what we want our future to look like. You can see in the photos, we have all the amenities that we talked about. We've called this project a bus stop of the future, because before we went out and bought what we wanted to buy, we had to, you know, understand and imagine what is it that we're looking for. So, that's where this rendering is gonna be really helpful. And really, this is what we want our future to look like.
And Mayor and Council members, that concludes our presentation. You know, this presentation is more about really just communication, collaboration, and cooperation from you and your team as we endeavor in this project. I just have to say that we, I actually love your shelters. And so, if you wanna stick to that design, it's something that we can work with. But, you know, we are going to a more sexier type shelter, but we wanna collaborate with you as we implement this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for coming. Does anyone have anything? Well, we appreciate, I know you met with Angela from our staff to talk about the shelters a few months ago. So, thank you for that, for collaborating with us. And also, Councilmember Tinsley was on council when the bus shelters began. She's a thought of it.
That was my baby, well, the whole team, I should say, but art in public places. That's a fun project that I really, really love working on. So, very, if I may, Mayor, very apropos that you came this meeting, because at the last meeting, your ears must have been burning. We were talking about Palm Trans stopping at the new Alton Hospital, which is, was just approved. So, it's very apropos that you came today. And I noticed on your presentation, you mentioned Nova, but also State, the State College, too, right practically across the mall, across the street from the mall.
Exactly.
And I see sometimes the students darting, like practically playing Frogger, crossing PGA Boulevard to get to the mall bus, the big, you know, bus station there, which I remember when they moved it to the area near Sears. It was a long time ago, but it was very needed because there was a lot of people that were standing and needing, you know, needing to hop on Palm Trans. So, yeah, planning is very important, and I appreciate you guys working with us so much to make it even better.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Don't go. We're chatting for a little longer. Michelle?
Since Marcy brought up Palm Beach State, and I was part of that initial discussion with the students where you came and talked to us, where are we on those discussions on moving the bus stops so they don't have to dart across PGA Boulevard?
Right. And so, Yash worked on that project. I asked him a couple times to evaluate it. So, he has some information for you. But I will say that, you know, the options that we wanna introduce, such as first and last mile service, Mobility on Demand, might be a solution, you know, to give a more direct service and not having that big bus deviate into the college. But, Yash, could you give her the latest information?
So, we've been in touch with the college to discuss exactly what Mr. Forbes said. We looked at a few options. We evaluated if the fixed route bus has to go in, you know, how much would that cost, because it's deviating obviously off of its path. And, you know, the fixed route bus really does, isn't made to do a lot of sharp turns. So, our, we've been in conversations, we're still discussing it with the college, but we'll keep you updated. What we're looking towards is the first and last mile option, because that's really what, you know, what, that's really a service that is applicable towards the smaller regions so that they can connect to the bigger fixed route system.
Thank you.
And thank you, Yash, because I've been, I've been around for the recent conversations regarding this. And so, we're waiting again to hear back from the school itself and looking at the land that they have. So, it is collaborative, and unfortunately, it's just not one of those things that you can just, you know, wave a magic wand and poof, there's suddenly more rideaway and places to put a bus stop. So, thank you, guys, for coming here tonight. As you know, most of us up here can talk about transportation and mobility for hours and hours, but we'll let you go, most of us. And again, it was really great to hear about Go Glades, about your Mobility on Demand projects, and how that has really changed lives out there so that people can get service door-to-door for $2 each way. That's extraordinary. The measures you've taken in reaction to COVID with the clean air filtration and the electric buses coming, it's all stuff that fits into the culture that we're encouraging here as well with our transit-oriented development and emphasis on mobility. So, thank you for being a part of it with us.
I'll also offer a thank you for Go Glades and helping leadership Palm Beach County bring our students in so that they can experience the GROW program, because that was a really big problem on how these students were gonna participate with the students in the rest of the county. So, thanks for that, too.
Glad to be a part of that. Thank you. Thank you, Council.
All right. Excellent. Thank you, guys, so much for coming. You guys are doing a great job. We appreciate it. All right. Next, we're moving on to comments from the public. I do have two cards tonight. When I call your name, please come up and state your name and address. You'll have three minutes to address us. First card is for Douglas Grant, please.
Hello. My name's Douglas Grant. I live at 301 Mossom Street. And I'm coming to the City Council tonight because I've had a problem with a neighbor who has been, had a daycare. Well, it got shut down. So, now the guy's uses front yard as like a playground for like eight kids, and it's eight kids screaming their heads off. I came to you last year. I had submitted some tape to code enforcement. And it seems like it got slipped through the cracks. And I'm not complaining. I'm not pointing fingers. All I'm wanting is somebody to look at it. I have a lot of tape of exactly what I'm talking about. It's crossed the line, and it goes on from 5 to like 8 o'clock at night. So, I'm asking City Council or the other people to please look at it. And like I said, I have this tape. I'm ready to go with it. Could somebody please get hold of me? And that's all.
Thank you, sir.
Otherwise, everything in the city's great.
Except, okay, except for that one little patch of land. Understood. Thank you so much. We have your information. Thanks for coming tonight. All right. Next, we have Ralph Lewis, please. Hello. If you could state your name and address, please.
Hi. My name is Ralph Lewis, and I'm in 625 North Bligher Drive, Palm Beach, Florida. So, what I came to talk to you about today is the Children's Symphony Orchestra. My goal is to save 500 at-risk children from the streets of Palm Beach County. One in five kids are likely, are living in impoverished conditions and are likely to commit a crime. I, myself, lived in impoverished conditions, but I did not turn out that way. But I do know how that can affect those kids as well. We created a program, which is called the Children's Symphony Orchestra by my foundation. And this year, I plan on raising $3 million to be able to save them all. We're gonna teach them, I have already hired a music director. We're gonna teach them music. We are gonna, going to give them the actual instruments themselves, and also take them in after schools with activity buses, and feed them, and help them out with their homeworks. We really need your help as far as this goes. It's just support goes. I've been trying to get in contact with you, and it's been kinda hard. So, I came here today to see if I could at least be able to set up a meeting with you guys, with the, my Board of Directors, to be able to push along this conversation. So far, since I've started this, raised over $7,000 already. What I usually do for the community or Palm Beach County is turkey drives, which we fed over our 100,000 meals so far, or given out over 100,000 turkeys so far in Palm Beach County, in Boynton Beach, Port St. Lucie, Broward County, and Lakewood, Florida, as well. So, today, as I've been spending more time in Palm Beach Gardens, I do know that you guys could possibly help me with this mission, to be able to stop these kids to get involved in either becoming a drug user, or going to jail, or even worse. That's all.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. I'm sorry. I don't, I don't know if I received anything from you or any of us have, but we're happy to meet you tonight, and we'll reach out to you for some more information. We have your, is this the information we need to reach out to you that's on this card?
Does that have my phone number on there?
It does not. So, if you'd be so kind as to provide your information to our clerk over here, she'll take it for you, and we'll, we'll reach out.
We also have an event on March 2nd that we'll be doing.
Go for it.
March, sorry, March 2nd that we'll be having. And on that event on March 2nd, we'll have some of the children out there that we have already started training to show you guys the progress that we've been making.
Where and what time?
March 2nd, 5:30, 150 Worth Avenue, Suite 216.
All right. Great. We'll get that information from you.
Got it.
Thank you so much. And, okay, great. You got it. Thank you for coming tonight. I know that's not easy to do. We appreciate it. Yep. All right. Yes, sir?
All right. Thank you. I do have a couple of items to, actually, several items to bring your attention tonight. Seems to be the night for presentations. First off, I would like to call Casey Mitchell back up to the podium, please, to, I have a certain Council member that's been bugging me week after week after to have a certain council member that's been bugging me week after week after week about, are we going to get a progress report here on the par three development out there? I don't want to mention any names, but he's wearing a white shirt. So, I've asked Casey to bring us up to date on this fabulous par three golf course that's being developed. And I also want to give kudos to Casey, who does such a wonderful job as far as the 18 hole course is concerned. And I have a requisition in for a clone. Hopefully...
I can't deal with another mini, so.
Thank you. If you bring us up to date, please.
Yes, absolutely. So, I'm going to do a, just, I'm going to narrate this video. It's about two and a half minutes long, but I first want to thank Chris Denhart and Joe Correio for taking this video. They came out earlier this week, and Mike Armit, who was able to kind of cut and put it together for you guys. So, we're going to start here. This is the existing clubhouse for those who haven't seen the facility. It's at 9500 Sand Hill Crane Drive. The facility here is our existing clubhouse, cart barn, and maintenance facility. So, it's going to pan west, and it's going to take you along the connector road. So, it's going to connect our west parking lot to our new facility. The homes that you see closest to you is going to be Ancient Tree. There's a 12-foot wide multi-use path for those who don't know who's going to, what's going to connect to Avenir. Cycling, walking, golf carts will be able to access the facility as well. And this is the parking lot for our new facility. This is the 30,000-square-foot putting green. We'll have 18 grass holes that we're going to move, kind of like a Himalayas green, and then a 60,000-square-foot grass tee. The driving range is to the right, and we're going to pan over and go over our cart barn, which is going to house the additional carts needed for the par three. Just adjacent to that is going to be the new practice facility. It's roughly three and a half times the size of our current facility and located in an area where it's very safe to practice. The clubhouse is about 14,000 square feet. It's going to pan to the back side of it, where you'll see the nine hitting, driving range bays downstairs, nine upstairs. We have the indoor/outdoor bar upstairs and the outdoor bar downstairs. That's going to, they're all going to be equipped with TrackMan technology, which is the same launch monitor that the PGA Tour uses to track ball flight for the PGA Tour. So, this connector road is, we're picking back up at the facility and heading now towards Avenir. Ancient Tree on the left, and Avenir coming up, one of the first parcels on the immediate left now. We have the, when we pan back over, you'll see the 16, 17, 18, 19 complex. The 19th hole is going to be used for our charity shootout to help with additional charities and fundraising for our local nonprofits. And we are back at the Avenir entrance, the clubhouse. The main Avenir clubhouse is just to your right. This is 16 to the right, 15 to the left. The tallest point, it's about 22 feet of elevation change, a peninsula green, and then our island green, which is hole number 19 right there. So, we're panning back towards the clubhouse. So, we are about 90 to 95% completed on the course itself. We have some latoral plantings and some small brush and shrubs to plant, but the course itself is grassed and sprigged and is growing in.
Is it going to be done before April?
We're looking at, we're looking at late April. We're looking at May 1st to open everything. So, we do need some time to get in there. Obviously, there's a lot that goes into this. So, once kitchen equipment is in, we have, all of our staff has to move in. We have to outfit the golf shop. We have to outfit food and beverage. We have a lot of staff and hiring to do for food and beverage and making sure that we're providing a good product, moving all the office furniture in, getting TrackMan up and running, so on and so forth. So, I, but we are pushing the project along, and they are moving. So, yes, we're hoping very, very soon. But we need about a month to move in, about a month where we will run the driving range independently, just to get a feel for traffic. And then we'll open everything together with the golf course, the driving range, food and beverage, the clubhouse, the golf shop, the party, is the, everything. So, yes.
Do we start reserving party space now?
Absolutely. We already have two on the books.
And we expect to be invited back for the ribbon cutting.
Absolutely.
Carl, did you, all right, go ahead, sir. Keep going.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Next, I would like to bring up Corey Wilder, and explain, talk to you a little bit about the Dog Park opening and improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, council members. As Mr. Ferris mentioned, I'm here to give you a couple of updates to a couple of changes to two different parks, the first being Lilac Dog Park. So, the Lilac Dog Park closed in late October for improvements to be made to the park. Typically, we close the park twice a year for about four to six weeks for grass replacement. This time, we closed it for some permanent repairs. The feedback we've received over the years from Dog Park patrons has consistently been regarding two items, the lengthy annual closures and the mud and dirt that is created as a result of the wear and tear from the dogs. As part of our five-year capital improvement plan, we budgeted funds a few years back with the intention of improving the Dog Park with synthetic turf to address these concerns brought to us by the Dog Park patrons. We ended up spending approximately just shy of $150,000 on the improvements. I'm going to scan forward. This is just before the improvements were made. As you can see, the turf gets worn out. The folks that utilize this park are very passionate. The dogs are very passionate, and they create a lot of wear and tear. We reopened the park as of January 3rd with about 7,000 square feet of canine synthetic turf grass, which is specifically designed for dogs. It has a knitted backing, whereas some other synthetic turf where you play football on or soccer on has like a carpet backing. So, this knitted backing allows for matter to flow through much more freely. We upgraded the irrigation system. We freshened up existing amenities. We upgraded the landscaping with river rock, and we added additional concrete pads for seating for more patrons to enjoy the shade. We're proud that we kept all the shades, the shade trees in the park and worked around them. We also kept the existing play equipment around the turf. You can see the improvements on the picture here. I think I got another photo from another view. This view used to be largely impacted by dogs, as the patrons would come and sit at those nearby shades, and the turf would get worn out rather quickly. So, now hopefully, they can enjoy it a lot longer. The Dog Park's divided into a small dog and an all-dog side. This is on the small dog side. So, they got a little smaller piece of synthetic turf, but they tend to do a lot less damage. So, I think it'll be welcomed. Any questions?
I don't, I don't have a question. Marcy, do you want to, I have a statement, but go ahead.
Just a statement, if you don't mind.
Please.
I just appreciate all your hard work on this. I know I've received numerous emails and comments regarding the Dog Park over the years. I've used it several times and stopped using it because it was so muddy and dirty, and I ended up having to bathe my dogs every time I got home. So, I appreciate it very much. I know everyone will appreciate it, and I appreciate all of your hard work and effort to make it a special place in our city. It looks more like the Jupiter one now, which is, I hate to say it, that's where I started going, because it was so much easier than this one. So, I know, but now I'm coming back.
The what? No, it looks great, and my inbox is much quieter. So, thank you. And I think that's something I did not expect when I got to come onto the city council with this amazing crew, was expecting, we spend a lot of time, you know, obviously doing policy and things like that, but the sheer amount of emails about the Dog Park turf, pickleball, and golf. So, thank you so much for what you've done for the community and for what you've done for our inboxes. We appreciate it.
So, if I may, Corey, will you tell us a little bit about this butterfly habitat?
Yes, sir. So, the other change to our parks is our Oaks Park Butterfly Garden. So, we, we felt like we wanted to contribute to an endangered species, which is the monarch butterfly. And we wanted to put it in a location where we thought it would complement the existing park. So, we chose Oaks Park. So, not only does this new amenity make this park better, it makes the trail better. So, what you see on the screen here is where it is located, on the east side of the tennis courts over at Oaks Park. Our team put a lot of effort into researching and providing a natural habitat that would be conducive with promoting the butterfly life cycle. Within a few days of planting these different species of plants, we had butterflies, caterpillars, and cocoons. I think the thing that we found interesting was, you know, when we build pickleball courts, we know that people are going to play pickleball. When we build a butterfly garden, we just pray that it brings butterflies. And it did, and they continue to thrive. So, within, within a week or so, they had eaten a lot of the milkweed. So, the caterpillars tend to feed off of the milkweed, and they have done every bit of that. So, we're excited about this new amenity. I think it's a great addition to the park. By contributing to monarch butterfly habitats, we contribute to other pollinators and other insects and other butterflies among the entire ecosystem. So, this is, right as we began, we planted a few more oak trees right along the trail. We added a little bit more trail inside this garden. And then, as we were finishing up, you can see the plantings inside of there, hundreds of different plants, new signage, split rail, and additional trails. So, most importantly, I wanted to invite everybody, council, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, residents, to our grand opening on March 3rd at 10 o'clock. We hope to see you all there and get to enjoy this facility with your families.
We'll be there. And I know the Oaks Park, or Oaks East and Oaks Area Community, again, have been sending a lot of emails asking for the opening date, because I think that staff tried to set this up and see how it went and hope the butterflies came. All the residents came, and they saw that, and they suddenly realized there's this beautiful butterfly garden in an area that used to be just a path. So, it's extraordinary. We can't wait to support you. Thank you.
Thank you, Corey. Next, I would like to bring up Wendy Tatum to talk about some programs at the pickleball and tennis world.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. Thank you for having us here on tonight, this evening. We just wanted to go over a little bit of our, you guys know Andy, Operations Manager Tennis. We just wanted to go over a little of our past events, so you guys would know what we've been doing out there with our big, beautiful new clubhouse, and look a little bit into the future of bookings we have for this upcoming year. As a lot of you attended, this was the Little Mose this past year, very successful. We had over 600 players and 60 countries represented, a huge event that lasted six days. And a lot of kids of all nations there, all languages. It's probably one of, it is our biggest event, but it's really a fun event to see everybody there. The economic impact to the city is amazing because they are there so long. They're actually, when they come to this event, they usually make a vacation out of it because they travel so far. So, even though our event lasted six days, they were probably here over a week or two, most of the families. So, you see the room nights and the economic impact in this one event. The World Pickleball, we did for the first time. That we were very proud of this event, because it was our first event, and we, like we said, we went bigger, went home. So, we really put this on, and it was amazing what we did with, if you look at the courts closest to you, those are our, those were our four tennis hard courts that we do our kids' programs on, our wheelchair programs on. And the company that came in that we worked with, no cost to the city, flipped them, resurfaced them to make 12 additional pickleball courts. So, that gave us a total of the 18 courts that we had for this event. We had all kinds of vendors. It was a fun event, a lot of music, a lot of action. Pickleball people were very happy with this event, and they were begging us to keep the courts. But we told them they were very useful in other avenues with our community. So, you'll see that we had 625 participants for this event and 700 matches. Just gives you a little bit. We had a, we had a retail area out there. We had the bar out there. They had the concessions. Everybody had a great time. Moving forward, we just hosted this event this past week, and it was Les Grand Dames, which we have probably, this is our seventh year, eighth year of running this event. It is ladies from all over, all ages. It's usually the age groups of the 30s to the 80s. And we had over 100 participants, 165 matches over five days. And once again, that is a big economic impact to the city. So, looking ahead, these are events that you'll see that we've confirmed this year coming up. The USTA National Clay, that's coming up the end of this month. And it's similar to the women's event that we just ran. A lot of the participants will return. It's the ladies, the same thing with the age bracket. The Little Mose East Regionals, we did that for the first time last year. They have booked with us again in April this year. It's one of their qualifying rounds to get to the big event that we host in December. They have it all over. They have it in California. They have it in Texas. So, they added Florida as a stop, and we have got that event. USTA Boys Nationals, that's a big event, because we do get that, and we get a lot of college recruits here. These are the kids that the colleges are looking to put into their colleges. So, it's a great event. You'll see a lot of scouts in these events. The boys, this is a national one for the boys. We do the same for the girls, high, high-level players. When we get into the September, this is another confirmed event, the men's USTA National 70s through 90s. We did that last year for the first time, and it was amazing. It was a great group. We had a good time. We have just confirmed the World Pickleball Classic, which is a new event. That will be October 12th through the 15th. It is a series that we're doing, and it will tie right into the World Pickleball event. So, what will happen is they'll come in and they'll resurface those courts for us back to pickleball again. And now, we have four additional courts being that are under construction. So, they'll be ready, and so that will add four more courts to our pool. But they'll come in, resurface that, we'll run that event, and then we'll stay, it will stay resurfaced until we hit the world event, and then it will be turned back into the tennis. So, that's really exciting for us to have those two events back to back. ITF, International Tennis Federation, we've worked with them before and had them in. This is a smaller version of the world one we had. They have booked for October 30th through November 5th. It's about 300 players coming from all over as well. I already covered the World Pickleball, and then we're back full swing to Little Mose again. They have booked with us for this next year. Any questions?
Wendy, what does our team situation look like now? How many teams do we have that are active?
Ladies teams? Sixteen.
Are there men's teams as well, or just the ladies?
No, we have nine, nine to 10 men's teams, and they play throughout the season as well as the women.
Do any of the tournaments conflict with their season or everything, or just?
No. What happens, we have, we get to schedule. So, what we will do is, we work with the county that schedules all the events. We have what we call blackout days. So, every August, I will submit all our blackout days for the weeks that they're here, and they play those matches away at the other facilities. So, then we have them home on the days that there's nothing happening on ours.
Thank you.
Don't know what you do in your spare time, if you have any, but it seems like a pretty busy schedule to me. And thank you so very much for both of you, for what you do over there and the management of that. I know it's out of love, but still, it's a lot of time. Thank you for that.
Well, thank you for your support.
Happy birthday, Wendy.
Oh, thank you.
It was the other day.
And next, Charlotte Przynski wants to talk to you about a couple of very large upcoming events.
Good evening, council. Charlotte Przynski, Leisure Services Administrator. Just amazing what goes on at our Golf and Tennis Center and really, truly outstanding city. So, I get the pleasure tonight to share with you some upcoming events. February, we kind of call it the February Sprint. There's a lot of things that are happening. As you guys know, there's that weekly little special event called the Green Market, about 3,000 people, music, dancing, food, and then... people, music, dancing, food. And then, this Saturday night, we have our Eagles Tribute Band. Hopefully, the weather holds that we can do that, be right here in the plaza. But, February Sprint includes two of the largest events that come to our community. So, we're going to kick off with Artigra on February 18th and 19th. This is the Palm Beach County, or Palm Beach North Chamber of Commerce. Third year that we've done this event, it's held at the Gardens North County District Park. In addition to the $2.8 million economic impact that that event brings to our community, we'll see 30,000 people that will come in and out those gates for two days. Interestingly enough, and really wonderful to present, this year, the Artigra has an app. You can scan the QR code there on the screen, or I've left flyers by the front. This app is new, and it's going to help our patrons navigate their way around parking, the schedule of events, and how to find artists. And it will talk about all the wonderful events that go on, from the chef demonstrations to the children's area. Very family-friendly event. You do not have to be an art aficionado to enjoy the day at Gardens North County District Park. So, join us for that. Next, the Honda Classic happens towards the end of this month. All of our favorite events are back. Military Appreciation Day, the fireworks, the concert, the awards ceremony after the final round on Sunday. That happens at the end of the month. But let's not lose focus on what the Honda Cares Group does. Last year, over $6 million given to local charities that supported 100,000 children. So, the Honda Classic Cares Program is truly why this event happens, to promote just the support in our community. It is a very fan-friendly event, and its economic impact is $65 million. A lot of you recognize this image on the screen. It is the Bear Trap 16 and Par 317. The reason why I put that up there is the Honda Classic team puts a lot of focus on the public experience, not just that special ticket that you buy if you're going to end up in the bear trap. But this year, they've expanded all the public seating and the Patriots Outposts in that area. So, if you just have a daily admission ticket throughout the tournament, you can experience everything that goes on and get right up front to play. So, we truly appreciate the Honda Classic team and their effort to make it very welcoming to everybody who attends that tournament. It's wonderful that we can say we're the host city of the two of the largest events that come to Palm Beach County. I do want to mention, I get the opportunity to share this with you, but without the support of all of your departments that come to the table at every meeting that we hold to work with our partners to make these amazing events safe and very friendly to patrons, it wouldn't happen. So, although I get to present it, all your departments take part in this, and I thank their participation, too. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Charlotte. Appreciate it very much. And Charlotte runs all those meetings and coordinates all of those efforts, along with her day job. So, thank you, Charlotte. Next, we have invitation. Chief Shannon?
Evening again. We just wanted to remind everybody that this Saturday, February 4th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, the police and fire departments would like to invite the whole community out to our annual Public Safety Day. It's held at, also at Gardens North District Park. So, we're looking forward, we're going to have a lot of events. The fire department and us, we're going to have demonstrations. So, we've gotten word out to all our schools. We're looking for a big turnout. So, it's always a fun time. So, hopefully, we can get as many people out on Saturday that we, as we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Last, but certainly not least, yesterday's Board of County Commissioner meeting, the issue that you're all familiar with, Eight-Laning of North Lake was on their agenda, and was being recommended by staff that it be transmitted to the state for their review as a change to their comprehensive plan map. This is something that a lot of staff members and people have been working on for quite some time, just like we worked on the other, the eastern part of North Lake that they wanted to widen as well. We had Sal Faso and the NCNC organization supporting our position. We had West Palm Beach supporting our position. And we have had meetings with their staff, their, I'm not staff, but their planning commission, and now, yesterday, yeah, I forget which day it is. Yesterday, it went to the county for their vote on whether they wanted it transmitted to the state or not. But thank goodness, our mayor was there. Actually, was very awesome in the manner in which she politely tore them apart. And Natalie wasn't going to speak, but apparently she was motivated to turn in a card and correct some erroneous information that was being shared, along with Sal Faso and a whole bunch of residents from our community out there, from Mayhill, Osprey, Carlton, and from Ibis. West Palm Beach did an excellent job of talking this down. And surprisingly, we got a six to one vote in our favor. And there's a whole lot of people that worked on this. The mayor, Natalie, Max, Todd, Ross, every person out there had a hand in this preparation of information, particularly the mapping information and Todd's engineering information that was actually read and understood and used by the residents from the city, as well as the residents in West Palm Beach that used that information that we gave them. That helped win the day. So, Ross and Todd in particular, with that detailed information that they were able to put together, and the residents were able to use it, it was really great to see. And then, again, with the performances of our mayor and our P&amp;Z director putting the point, the dot on the eye, it was, it was really good to see. And of course, the results were fantastic. So, that's put to bed. That one's gone. So, with that, I want to thank everyone that was involved in this thing, and it was a good win, and it was for the right reason. And that's what we like. Thank you. I'm finished now.
I want to comment on that. I wasn't there in person, but I did watch it, and it was a great team effort, for sure. Everyone did an excellent job. Natalie wrapped it up succinctly, and our mayor, and Maria, Commissioner Marino did a fabulous job also, I might add. So, it was, it was great to watch. I was cheering it on in the, you know, on the TV screen. But it was a fun thing. I appreciate everyone's help because I know it's something that people are, were talking about, were concerned about. I mean, no matter where I was, walking the dog, or at Alton, or somewhere, people would bring that up and ask me what's going on with it. I thought it was on, and it's off. Now, it's on again. And I appreciate everyone's hard work and effort. Knocked it out of the park, and it, obviously, like Ron said, the results were excellent. So, thank you guys so much. And if I also might add, you know, Charlotte made a good point, you know, with the Honda and everything going on in February, and this, North Lake Boulevard. But the logistics of the Honda Classic and the logistics of Artigra, that's not a small feat. And you guys do such a fabulous job. And I know we're very proud of all of you, but I don't know if we say it enough, but when you see the Honda and you go there, it seems like it's effortless. But I know a lot of hard work went into that, and I want to thank you guys. I know, on behalf of the entire council, we see you guys working, and we really, really, truly appreciate all that effort. And it pays off because look at what it does for our city and all of our residents and visitors, business owners, and the impact that you mentioned. So, I just want to say thank you.
Who was the, the nay vote, or who was the opposing vote that wanted to support the Eight-Laning?
Commissioner Baxter.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baxter from out west of us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. All set?
Mayor, can I say something before?
Sure, of course.
I don't, I don't want to speak out of turn, but while we're thanking everybody, can I somehow get that dog park back up? There's one slide in there, one that kind of like goes and overlooks Lilac Park. I mean, you guys, we all get phone calls and stuff, and, you know, I usually don't say much about meeting with public or constituents or whatever. But this one, and a couple more, were kind of relative, I thought you guys might want to know about. Not that one. It's when it shows the new, that one's good. So, I almost started this Quality of Life Initiative with Ron, and just because we get random phone calls, and I usually meet with people and resolve things on a council basis, whether it's just fish around a lake or something. But on this one, I had some people in the dog park call me and meet me over there. And I met them over there, like around noon, going back, I think, chief, what, six, seven weeks ago, maybe eight, I don't know. And when the high school kids get out of school, it's probably on a work release program, so a lot of them are leaving around noon. And what they'll do is, if you can see beyond the benches there where the blue building is, it looks like there's a tarp to the left, they all congregate from the school because the school doesn't want them on their property. They want them to leave, go to work, go home, do what they do. So, what they do is, they all go over here, 100, 75, whatever. And when they called me over there, they're laying actually on top of these tarps that have got to be 25, 30 feet in the air. And it's not just a littles. And they're laying on the bench, and they're almost scattered all over the place. So, I saw this. I met with the, doesn't matter if they're constituents or what. I think I met with someone who comes down from Jupiter to Walker Dog here, too. And then, I actually knocked on some neighbors' doors, because if you guys are aware of the Lilac and Plant area, it's, no disrespect, it's a little bit lower rental area. So, I kind of thought it was a quality of life issue. And I asked, is this really going on all the time? And it was. So, I got with, I got with the manager, and this is a thank you kind of thing. I got with the manager. I got with the chief, got with the assistant manager. And I go, what can we do about this? Our dog park's now beautiful. We have a kid problem. So, the chief implemented some extra enforcement, and we got with the school. It still seems like the school doesn't care. They want the kids gone. But I have been visiting that area and talking to some other people, and I actually asked all of them to meet me out there the other day. And we all walked it together, and we talked with people in the dog park, and they're saying it's much better. So, I know, I didn't want this to get washed out because sometimes staff leaves. Might be a little bit out of order, but I wanted to say thank you for taking the extra effort because the dog park is absolutely stunning. And they have these little dog fountains that are like this high off the ground. I wish you would have showed that picture because it's like you can wash your dog. Anyway, whatever, I'm just talking. So, thanks for cleaning this little quality of life issue up that seems to be very important to the people on Plant and Lilac, chief of police. And, you know, I don't know if you guys have gotten some other calls on the dumpsters and the racing and North Lake, but that's why I talked to Ron. I go, I might start a little Quality of Life Initiative and maybe see if we can do some more things on just these simple calls that I get. So, thanks for listening to me.
I'll get right, I'm sorry. If we could just pause for one second. I think Marcy has a question. Go ahead. Do you want to ask?
Yes. Is Resolution 142023, is that on the consent agenda or at the end?
It's at the end, ma'am. It's under Items for Council Action Decision.
I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
All right. So, next is the consent agenda. Is anyone pulling anything off at all tonight? All right. So, if nothing's being pulled, can I get a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Any opposed? I mean, all in favor? Excuse me.
Aye.
Aye.
And none opposed. Motion passes. Thank you so much. Next, we're going to be having public hearings. I'm going to read the quasi-judicial statement. Tonight, we are holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following case, Resolution 7, 2023 PGA Waterfront Site Plan Modifications. This means that the city council is required by law to base its decision on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials, which are in the official city file in this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The council is required by law to allow cross-examination of any witness who testifies tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations, and will be permitted in the order of the witness's appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, please fill out a card over to my right over here and give it to our city clerk over to my left right here. And the city clerk will now swear in all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening on any or on this case.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
If the clerk could please read the title?
Resolution 7, 2023, a resolution in the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending the site plan for PGA waterfront located on the southwest corner of the intersection of PGA Boulevard and Ellison Wilson Road. To add eight dwelling units, increase the building height to 86.48 feet, realign the north and south buildings and drive aisles, and permit other site modifications, providing conditions of approval, providing effective date for the purposes.
Thank you so much, Patty. I'm going to open the hearing. Go ahead, Marcy.
And, Madam Mayor, I just want to let you know, I'm recusing myself from Resolution 7, 2023. My husband and his engineering company is working on this project.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. We're going to go ahead and declare ex parte. I'll start down at the end. Carl?
Negative.
Mark?
Nope.
Rochelle?
Nope.
And I have none either. So, we're going to ask the petitioner to please come to the podium. Hey, George. So, we have George Gentile at the podium.
Good evening. For the record, let me get my program started here. There we go. For the record, George Gentile, President of 2GHO Inc., Landscape Architects, Planners, and Environmental Consultants. And we're very pleased to be here tonight.
Have you had been sworn in?
Yes, I have been sworn in. Thank you. I made sure I did that. But we're very, very pleased here to bring you this phenomenal project. I know that we attempted annexation many years ago, and this will be my fourth time, and I know it's going to get built because you have a great, great builder that's going to be doing this project. So, and I can tell you because we're already pretty far along with working drawings. So, anyway. So, just really quick, DMBH Residential Investments LLC and PGA Landings Marina LLC, which is the Marina portion, there is 29 slips here, and you'll see that in a minute, but 23 are part of the leasing program for the PGA Landings LLC. And of course, Catifumo Companies. Dan Catifumo is here, and I'm going to ask Dan to come up just before the, at the end of my presentation. He wants to make a few words, if that's okay. Thank you. The architects are Spinoir Work Partners. They've been working with us and done a phenomenal job. The Landscape Architect Planner is our firm, 2GHO Inc. And as you just heard, civil engineering firm doing the civil work is WGI Inc. And traffic engineering is being done by Kemley Horn. Great team and a great effort to put this together. This is the site plan of the project. I'm going to go over this fairly quickly. I think a lot of you know the project so that your staff can get up here in a minute and go over it. So, the request is for increasing the number of units to 106 from 98. However, this, we are reviewing this under the county ULDC and the county comp plan because we're not changing that at this time. And on January 12th, you all have annexed this property in. But we have to do this to keep ourselves on schedule, and we really appreciate working with your staff on this. It's 10.97 acres. And the existing zoning is, in the county is PUD, and it's RM, residential medium density. But the land use, which is critical here, is the HR12, which is high residential, 12 units per acre, and commercial high with 12 units per acre. So, even though there's a split land use, we can do residential across the entire thing. And there's Um, and there's the, the listing of the uses, um, uh, that were approved at the county level, um, and then, uh, we are asking for the increase in the, uh, units now. This is the approved development plan that was in the county, and if you watch really close, uh, this is the new plan. You don't see much difference, there's a little bit of difference in the entry, uh, way we are asking the, the city council to allow us to modify the entry drive and, and drop-off area to the south building. Um, the two, uh, buildings, uh, on the north and south side, uh, in a portion of them have been, we're asking to raise to a seventh floor, um, and then the building that is along Ellison Wilson Road, we're asking for that same seventh floor on that building, which brings us to the 106 units in the project. So, uh, I went through most of this, uh, and I won't, uh, go through it again, but, uh, this is 25 units less than the 131 that are allowed, and the, uh, density is actually 2.34 deuse acres less, uh, than allowed, and as I said, we have 29 slips. Um, we do have an increase in parking, and in the county, there is no restriction on how much parking you put, as long as you meet the code. Um, and so we have, uh, quite a bit of extra parking on this, but what you'll see in this is that most of the parking is not visible to the public, it's underground. This site goes from elevation 31 at Donald Ross Road to 5.5 at the bulkhead, and so we've tucked all the parking in, and you'll see, you won't see much of the parking, but we do have some parking, and I'm going to take you very quickly around the property. Uh, this is the entry area that comes off of Ellison Wilson to the gate. Uh, it comes right off, we have a turn lane that's going in that we've been working with the county on, and now working with the city as well in some of our documentation. The other driveway that you see, uh, in this location at the south end is actually for emergency services only. It'll have a Knox Box gate lock on it, and we have been working with your, uh, fire rescue team as well as we did with the county to allow that to happen. Um, the project, uh, driveway goes along the south and goes down around the building, and you can see the entryways. This is a drop-off, an entryway under the building to the garage area, and that drive goes all the way around. If any of you were, I know most of you were here, or maybe you all weren't here, but we had, when we did this project in the county, um, two versions ago, uh, we had an issue with fire rescue going around the site. We rectified that in this plan when Mr. Catifumo took over, we made sure that there was a driveway going around. You have a great dog park. We were fortunate, our office, to design the dog park in Jupiter that you love and go to, uh, but, uh, the residents will have a, a waterfront dog park here, I'm afraid to say, on the intercoastal waterway, and that's down in this far corner. So that's the residence area for that, and it's a, it's their own neighborhood park that was part of our project. You can see the private Marina slips on this side, uh, of the project on the left, and the Marina side that goes towards, uh, the, um, right side of the graphic. And then you start to see the amenity deck, uh, from this area. This is our amenity deck, it's two levels, the pool is down at the waterfront level and the, the driveway level, and then as you come up to the, to the, above the pool area, that is the, the, what we call the court area, uh, the upper terrace lawn area, and that is also an amenity area for the residents. Um, and we have, uh, cabanas and, and other things in the program for the residents there, as well as access to the Marina, uh, and those slips. And this gives you a full picture of the whole, full site development plan, um, and the 23 slips that are in the Marina area. That is a, that was zoned a commercial Marina, uh, it's, um, it's a recreation parcel, but is, is allowed in the county to have a commercial Marina. However, we have no clean, fish cleaning, we have no commercial activities, no fueling, uh, the FDP does not allow us to do that. So it's strictly for leasing those slips, uh, to the, um, to the residents, that is open if resident doesn't take it, but it is a, uh, we anticipate that out of 106 units, all 23 slips will be gone and stay in the, will be with the residents here, so. I'm going to just very briefly show you some of the renderings. This is a view from the, uh, uh, north, uh, actually coming under the bridge, um, uh, of the, of the project and the Marina. We're actually moving, and the Marina's being constructed now, we're moving the bulkhead wall from its original in about 42 feet to allow larger yachts in this area, which is also, and it also provides more, uh, width to the intercoastal here between the waterway caf, uh, waterway cafe and this property, which is, is a very used area on the waterway. I come down every couple of weeks from Jupiter and drive my boat through here as well. Here's where you can get a view, this is from the intercoastal waterway, you can see the amenity area, the, the two amenity areas, the upper terrace area, uh, and you can see the, the, how you can actually enter in and get into your units from this area of the pool deck, uh, without having to go upstairs. You can go upstairs, you can go up elevators, there's, uh, all, uh, methods of getting through there. This is a shot looking to the northeast, and again, you get a, a view of the architecture, uh, and the terracing of the amenity areas, uh, on the project. It really came out very nice, the, the elevation change just, it was very difficult to work with, but it really made for a great project. Uh, this is the intercostal view east with the Marina slips there. Um, and this is a bridge view that you can see from, uh, to the southeast, coming over the bridge. Um, you're very much not going to see the side that is closest to the PGA Bridge, that is also a very steep slope and heavily landscaped, and we're putting in more landscape. And this is our landscape plan for the Ellison Wilson Corner, uh, and PGA. Uh, this is the turn lane that was, uh, built, uh, as part of the original approval project, project for PGA, uh, waterfront, uh, which is, I just, the, the name is, of course, branded, uh, the Ritz Carlton Residences of Palm Beach Gardens, uh, or Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, so, uh, but we are looking at it as it was in the county right now, so. Uh, some of the interior views, I'll go through these, I'm almost done, so, mayor, so that you'll know that. Uh, these are some of the views, uh, actual views from the apartments, uh, this is looking to the west, um, uh, this is looking, uh, to the south, uh, towards the, along the intercoastal waterway from the south building. The balconies are phenomenal, uh, I could probably live out here with a tent, and I wouldn't have a problem in one of the balconies, so, nobody would bother me. So, no, but these are, uh, they're, they're very gorgeous, and this is the interior designs, and this is the quality, uh, that you're getting here, and this is the overall project in a, in a, um, a view, elevated view, um, and we are very pleased to present this to you all, and I'll stop. I'm, I, I do want to thank, thank all of your staff, I would like to thank the, the city manager, um, Natalie and her staff, and, uh, everyone who's helped us. This was very complicated, keeping it in the county format and bringing it into the city to make sure that we meld everything together. So kudos, and thank you so much to your staff, and I'm going to let Mr. Catifumo make a couple of comments, thank you.
Good evening, Dan Catifumo, mayor, vice mayor, council member.
I was going to ask you if you've been sworn in.
Yes, I have been sworn in.
Or Martin will ask if I don't.
As you know, I've been doing this 35 years here in Palm Beach Gardens. This is my home, this is my life. It has been the most incredible journey dealing with the Ritz Carlton, this will be our third project with them. It is the number one brand in the world. As you know, we've developed most of PGA Boulevard, and this is our final, I wouldn't say final project, but it is definitely the kudo product that we want to be able to bring you. One thing we wanted to be able to say is, if it wasn't for the leadership of Ron Ferris, Max, Natalie, Martin, Peter, and, and everybody in your whole departments have jumped in and literally said, roll up our sleeves, let's get this done, it has been absolutely incredible, and we're actually honored to be back in Palm Beach Gardens. Thank you.
Well, well said, thank you, thank you, I think you're amazing staff, absolutely. Um, Martin, do we have a staff presentation tonight?
Uh, Madam Mayor, um, for the record, Martin Fitz, uh, had been sworn, we don't have a, a specific presentation that's needed, um, this, the applicant did a very good job. There are a few things I would like to point out. Um, the applicant has agreed to provide 12 EV chargers, um, at the time of construction. All told, they, they are wiring, um, the majority of their parking spaces so that about, um, up to about 250 spaces would be available, um, to the property owners to have, uh, installed for their unit if they desired to. The wiring will be going in at construction.
And that wiring was level two or three, it was up to the resident, right? Okay, thanks, sorry to interrupt.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. Uh, and also, um, this was heard at the planning zoning, on the 17th, and it was recommended approval six to one, and staff recommends approval of Resolution 7 as presented.
Thank you, sir. All right, uh, do you guys want to chat about this? Mark?
I have some questions.
I have a simple question. Um, how do you park in the one building that's furthest east? I mean, you can, I didn't see an, I'm sorry, I didn't see an entrance, not that it matters, but I'm just kind of curious. I see the entrance to the south and north building.
Yes, there, there is an entrance, uh, to that area around this, this, uh, the east side.
There is another entrance.
Let me go back to the plan real, um, I'm sorry, let me go back to the site plan, might help.
Yeah, where's the entrance to the building 179?
So there's, there is access right here to this building, and there is pedestrian, and we have a lot of pedestrian circulation, um, uh, through the entire site, but that is the, uh, that's the access point.
Hidden behind all the trees underneath letter F. Got it, thank you.
And then, and then the, the, of course, the entire plate is a, a two-level parking garage, so you'll flow through the entire thing to all the buildings, so it's, it's, uh, you have access, so you could come in another area and get to the other parking, parking spaces.
All right, uh, Mark, anything else? A question? Rochelle, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a couple. Um, you just, so what you were just saying is, the parking lots are all connected underground from all three, okay. Uh, can you go back to the last slide? Uh, yeah, that one's good enough, okay. The seventh floor is only what?
Right here, just this little, this piece right here?
Yeah, the two pieces, that, so that's only partial, uh, partial seventh floor.
Partial on those building, and then this entire area across.
Was it two units on each of the side buildings?
There's, um, yes, two units on each side, and then, um, six on the center.
The gorgeous.
Sorry. Four.
Four, four in the center, yeah.
Four units on the, on the east, on the eastern building, yes.
The beautiful view that you were showing down the intercoastal, if you look at that corner building, is that one unit that wraps around onto Ellison Wilson?
Yeah.
So they get actually views of both, not one apartment getting a view of Ellison Wilson and more.
Right, yeah.
Carl, question before we keep going?
Does this, um, does this show art? Anywhere, are we doing art in public places, or are we required to on this?
Uh, we did not have that requirement in the county, uh, for the art in public places, but.
Yes, there's no requirement in the county, nor would there be a requirement in the city that art program that we have is for non-residential.
Yeah, I kind of figured. Anyway, um, I know Dan and Joey have, have called me a couple times about going to your, is it a planning and design center? So I like to feel I have a, a relationship with Dan and Joey and obviously you, but I'm talking about Dan specifically as the developer, on this and other projects, and we meet and we talk on, often on stuff, but, um, I'm going to encourage council members elect, I'm going next week, we'll bring everybody to the design center because I heard that, um, outside of just talking to you, that it's really, um, something that's special to see. So I'm going to go next week, probably later in the afternoon.
16th, right?
Uh, when is it?
February 16th?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's two weeks.
I'm going next week, so I'm going when I want, and I think you guys should too. But I'll see you guys next week, so I just encourage everybody to get to know Dan a little bit better because he's so ingrained in our community, and he's not as bad as he looks. He looks like a tough guy, but he's not that tough. So I'll see you guys next week.
Rochelle, you have another?
I don't know, just, I'm just going next week.
You have another question?
Yeah, I had, um, now I've forgotten what the question was. All right, come back around, I forgot what the question was. Oh, I know what the question was. Martin, what was the one dissenting, what was the reason for the one dissent at planning and zoning?
Uh, the dissension was from Commissioner Chris Oftedell, and his dissension involved primarily the density intensity proposed for the project, but the audio minutes, the full audio minutes are available on our website.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, I have one or two quick questions. Not that I imagine these folks are going to be walking across the street to get their groceries often, because I'm sure that will be, everything will be brought in. Can I see a little bit, or can you explain a little bit, it could be staff or, or Mr. Gentile, whoever feels like doing it. Um, the walkability within the area is wonderful, so if someone wants to cross the street to get to all the wonderful amenities, how easy is that to do?
Uh, yeah, I can address that.
That'd be great.
Uh, one of the reasons that we, uh, actually separated the buildings a little bit more was to actually increase the width of the walkability to get through the project, through the buildings, uh, let more airflow, of course, and, but we also had utility items that we had to deal with, but, um, if I could go back very quickly to the, uh, to the site plan, because I think that, uh, I'm going to go right here, if I could. But as you can see, uh, we have, uh, walkways that, that actually, uh, come in through the entryway, they go, uh, across the emergency access, and they wind all the way through the project, all the way down to the park. Uh, you walk, you can go along the, the Marina front, we have walkways connecting from the top portion of the entry drive to every building, you can see them on both sides, there's a whole series of walks, and then they also come out and you get onto the PGA, uh, I mean, the Ellison Wilson sidewalk, you can get onto PGA, uh, and cross at PGA, you can go across the bridge over to the waterway cafe. Uh, I could tell you that it, we were very, very, um, involved in making sure there was tremendous walkability in this project. Um, we even increased it when, uh, when Mr. Catifumo took over because of his knowledge and our knowledge of the mobility, uh, programs that you have here, and we tried to address those as much as we could.
You can really see it, so, okay, great, thank you, that was a good answer. And then, um, I do have one more question, it's a trivia question, do you remember what was there in the seventies on that corner?
Yes, I, well, the seventies, uh, the Panama Hatties.
Before that, like 1973, it was, um, it was a biker house.
Yes, that's right, yeah. Uh, there, this is also the famous Rumbar site, I mean, that wasn't ever permitted, uh, but all of us probably went there at some point.
Yeah, no, I just remember being a kid and going to school, um, on that right-hand turn, and there was a little house on that corner, but most of the people would, um, sleep outside, yeah, so.
Right, you're right.
Different, all right, so we're going to.
Actually, that house was, the house was Chris Doyle's, and it was up in the upper end here.
Really?
Yeah.
Gosh.
And, uh, Chris Doyle owned the Panama Hatties project and the Rumbar, and then sold it to, um, the Allied Capital.
Thank you for that history, we appreciate it. All right, so, uh, let's go ahead and close the hearing. Could I get a motion in a second to approve, please?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Oops, sorry, any further discussion? All right, well, thank you guys so much for this project, thank you staff for, um, for jumping in so much, sounds great, loving the walkability. Let's take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we're moving on to items for council action, discussion, and interest. I'm going to wait for Marcy. While Marcy's walking up, oh, Natalie's busy.
I have a lot of those stuff we've got.
Um, Natalie, while you're there, I'm going to embarrass you. So, um, while Marcy's getting settled so that we can finish, um, our, um, items for discussion, but I want to congratulate you. Tomorrow, you, uh, will be going to the Safe Street Summit because you have been nominated for an award, one, one of many, I hope, and you were nominated, I want to make sure I say the right thing, you are nominated for the community award for the whole county, for Palm Beach County, and we want to congratulate you, we think you're a winner, and also to thank staff for being such a big part of putting together the application, so, early congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, so, let's dig in. So we have a council meeting on April 6th that has conflicts for a holiday, and we have a lot going on at that meeting, it will be bittersweet, you'll have our last meeting with Mark and Rochelle, and our first meeting with Dana and Burke coming on board, so we want to make sure everybody is respected and the time is chosen. We received an email from the city manager, um, with some suggestions, so let's start with that and work our way through. I see, Marcy, you pushed your button, go for it.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, may I, I forget these things, I'm sorry, I forget these things are so loud.
All right.
We just need to read the...
Oh, I apologize, I'm just digging it.
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I appreciate it. I'm sorry, Patty, could you please read it?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution 14, 2023, a resolution, the city council, the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, providing for the April 6th, 2023, regular meeting in the city council to convene at a time to be determined, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. All right, Marcy, you had your light on. You had your light on. Yeah. So I guess we'll just start with a discussion.
Well, I think we should start with the email we were given that had...
Well, it's, I mean, I don't mind using that as the basis.
Okay.
Thank you for sending the email. As you know, what we're talking about is the April 6th council meeting, which is actually the second day of Passover. And as some of you may know, Passover, the first and the second day of Passover, or evening of Passover, there's a Seder involved, and the Seder, as some of you may know, is very long, and involves a lot of family, and it's time-consuming, and so obviously, this is one of the, one of the important Jewish holidays, this one and Yom Kippur. We're very lucky because not very many Jewish holidays fall on our council meetings, it just so happens that this one does, and just to, not that it means anything right now, but in 2025, Yom Kippur, giving you very, a lot of notice, in 2025, Yom Kippur will be on a Thursday night, so this will be coming up again in, in 2025, but I did look at the calendar. There's, sundown is, really doesn't play a part in the second night of Passover and the Seder, however, obviously, we want to do our business, we want to make sure that we swear everyone in, it is a bittersweet holiday. Personally, my family gets involved, I do a lot of the cooking with my parents, so it's something that I will not be able to attend, whether it's five, six, seven, eight, however, a suggestion might be to do it that morning, or to do it that afternoon, or the Tuesday prior to the Thursday, the 6th. Those are suggestions. Tuesday night is before the holiday, if you want to do it then, that's fine, or doing it on the actual 6th, but in the morning.
The 6th in the morning with a whole house full of family and cooking all day is, and it's, it just sends a bad message to the community that we're holding the meeting on this day. The Jewish population's one-eighth of the county right now, and I just don't think it's in the best interest, and it would be very difficult.
Would you rather do it on the Tuesday?
Tuesday's fine, Monday's fine. Looking at what we got from the city manager, I also see that, I mean, resolution 90 that said it's every day except for July and September that we do it, should be amended at some point to include religious holidays and federal holidays. We switch it for January 1st, if that falls on a holiday, you know.
I agree with you, Rochelle, and it does, in pursuant to chapter, pursuant to section 4.3...
I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt for one second, let's, I want to, let's get the calendar sorted first, and then we'll bring it back to talk about what we want to do next, because you both mentioned, just, I want to back up before we get, so you mentioned the fourth, which is Tuesday, or the fifth, which is Wednesday, and some of us will be in...
Wednesday.
No, 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 not Wednesday, Wednesday is Passover.
The third or fourth, Monday or Tuesday.
Negative.
We have council members that'll be absent that day, too.
My plane lands Tuesday night, 10:30.
Okay, and so...
You mean, you're out of town until Tuesday at 10:30?
Yeah, I'm out from the 24th till that Tuesday, and I checked it with Mark while we were sitting here to see if we can come in, but I land Tuesday night at 10:30.
And, and just to clarify, Rochelle, I agree with what you're saying, but what I was starting to say is, section 4.3 of the city charter, it does say the next regular scheduled meeting of the city council following the municipal election, or as may be established by a majority vote of the council. That's, so that is an option as well.
What about the morning, Friday, since morning was postured, what about Friday morning?
Friday, the 7th of April.
The 7th of April, that, that morning, or sometime during the day on Friday, I mean, it's Good Friday.
All right, so real quick, before, anyone, let me just, wait, hang on.
That's Good Friday, that's not good either.
When we're saying, let's go all the way down one time, and let's hear it from everybody, we've got Mark and Carl, how do we feel about the 7th of April in the morning?
It's Good Friday, so I take that back, I wouldn't do that on Good Friday either.
And I hate to say this, but the 7th of April, I'm babysitting my, my new grandbaby and three-year-old grandbaby on that Friday.
And the city's closed.
Okay, okay.
All right, thank you for that.
Well, yeah, it's Good Friday.
All right, and...
If I may reiterate the memo, we've done the research, and, you know, prior to April 6th, we're still missing any one council member. The next week, we're missing any one council member. So it, you're required to go to the week of 17th. Now, that, that's why we're recommending anytime on that Thursday, April the 6th, April 6th, yeah.
April 6th.
So...
Do you know if it's going to be a big agenda at all? I know it's hard to know, it's months away.
From what I know now, you have board and committee appointments, but I don't know how many that would be.
It's relatively light right now.
Very light, so for, for the new council members to take their seats, the council members that are here on the dais, once the election results are read, then new people take their seats, and I don't mean to be insensitive, but you're done. You can go home if you want to, but at the same time, it's a light agenda, we could do it at noon, and if you want, we'll provide you some lunch if you want, but...
Noon's not good, I got a whole family to, at the house.
What day, hold on, Rochelle, is there either one Wednesday or Thursday that would accommodate you better for like an hour or so? So we want to be sensitive to everybody here, but I think with this...
Well, Wednesday's, Wednesday is, is fine, Passover doesn't begin till sundown on Wednesday, I have nobody at my house on Wednesday.
Marcy, you good with Wednesday?
I go to my sister's, so, and we don't start till late, so...
Wednesday morning.
So Wednesday morning works.
So Wednesday morning.
What time on Wednesday morning?
What about, Mark, are you good with Wednesday?
Well, I can, I just, look, I need to, I need to schedule my office space, I mean, I start work at 10 o'clock on Wednesday, so I could come in at nine and be done by 10 and leave.
Morning would be better.
Okay.
Otherwise, I mean, I don't want to take another time, I mean, I'm happy to do whatever people want to, want to do, but, look, we are elected officials in the city of Palm Beach Gardens, we owe it to the next council and to the staff to get, get work done and get started as soon as possible. Waiting until the 17th and beyond is just way too long out.
Wednesday morning, what time?
I would rather do it first thing in the morning versus the afternoon, because I also am doing a Seder on Wednesday, so Wednesday morning at nine would work for me.
I could do nine on Wednesday.
What about you, Mark?
I'm fine, nine o'clock Wednesday morning, April 5th.
I could do nine on Wednesday.
I'm going to be there whatever date it is.
I'm with you, I'm, I'm here to work.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to be there, I'm sorry to talk to you in the middle of this, yes.
Staff's good, we're good for Wednesday morning.
Caveat is that we, of course, will have to make sure that Bert Primoroso is available so that he can be sworn in.
He's got to make himself available.
Well, I mean, that's not...
We're voting on it.
Are you okay?
We're voting on it. What choice do we have?
Dana said she's available. So right now, we have a consideration for Wednesday, April 5th, at 9:00 a.m. here in City Hall and Chambers. Looks good.
Can I make a motion to...
I don't, do we need, do we, how do we vote on it, Max, is there any...
You can just make a motion to adopt the resolution with change...
Thank you, Mark, okay.
Yes, we do, we're changing the meeting to April 5th at 9:00 p.m., or 9:00 a.m.
Like the motion to move the April 6th meeting to Wednesday, April 5th at 9:00 a.m.
I'll second. And do we need to make a motion to approve resolution 14 stating that?
That's part of that, that's...
Okay, all right, so it looks like resolution 14 has passed through, the April 6th meeting is now going to be on April 5th at 9:00 a.m. Boom.
So we could call the question.
All right, so we'll call it question then, please, we're done?
Aye.
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 All right, so motion passes?
Good.
Great. Now that we did that, Max? If you, do you have a city attorney appoint tonight? Max, do you have a city attorney's report this evening?
No, ma'am.
All right, if there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned. Oh, I'm sorry.